Everyone, I'm now calling this meeting to order. Please stand with us. We'll be led in prayer by Alderman Gallagher. Please remain standing after that for the pledge of allegiance. They'll be led by Alderman at large, George Payne.
Heavenly Father, we come before you with thankful hearts, thankful that we serve a Savior who is loving and full of mercy and grace, Lord. Would we thank you for that, and we thank you for the favor that you've bestowed on our city, Lord? Just pray that you would be with everyone tonight, Lord, to help us make decisions that would be beneficial for our city. And, Lord, thank you for the love that you show each of us every day. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a good republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes for the March 7 meeting.
Some move?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second by Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for the purchase of new golf carts for our Parks Department, our city attorney, Nick Manley.
This was a state contract purchase, but since the golf carts can be purchased less than the state contract amount for the same golf cart, in accordance with Mississippi Code 31712, the board has to approve it. So tonight, just need authorization for the golf carts to be purchased from Lads. An amount of, I mean, it's a savings of $24,288 from the state contract price. The total amount is $135,198.40. So need authorization for the mayor to sign this resolution and the Parks Department to purchase those golf carts.
Some move?
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Flores, second by Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is an MOU between Southern Fire Department and the Mississippi Office of Homeland Security's Task Force.
Skip number six.
Did I skip six? My bad. Number six is MOU of the Horn Lake Creek Drainage District.
Yeah, this MOU, at the last meeting, we awarded, or we authorized the mayor to sign and accept the grant from NRCS for the Horn Lake Creek Stabilization Bridge Project and Slope. As part of that, the Horn Lake Creek Drainage District is also going to help cost share with, for that project. They'll call share an amount not to exceed $250,000. Right now, their estimate would be around $232,000. So this MOU spells out their obligations, along with their willingness, cost share for the project, and the amount of the difference between the NRCS grant and the City of South Haven funds. So tonight, just need authorization for the mayor to sign this MOU with the Horn Lake Creek Drainage District for their cost share portion for the Horn Lake Creek Bridge and Slope Project with NRCS funds.
I'll make that motion. Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Hoots, second by Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion?
Remind me, which is the Horn Lake Creek Bridge?
It's the bridge that's on Horn Lake Road, just south of State Line. And there, as you know, there's a tremendous erosion that has come under that bridge and then throughout the golf course, or the old golf course at North Creek. But the bridge got, the erosion got so severe, and the channel changed directions and got us into a situation where it jeopardized the stability, or would jeopardize, it's not to that point, but would have jeopardized the stability of the bridge. So we moved this project up, again, like Nick's saying, with the NRCS funding. We moved this to the top of our drainage improvement list because it was very time sensitive, so. And as y'all know, just again, for everybody, as an update, our drainage improvement priority list, you know, we make adjustments throughout the year. We budget a half million dollars, and we use that, you know, with NRCS money and any other monies that we can combine it with to get the maximum benefit to the citizens. But we have to move those priorities based on things like this one. And also, usually, it's situations where water can get in a home. You know, if water is, you know, pooling or flooding, that's one thing. But when it's to the severity that it's going to get in a home, we move that up to the top of the list. So anyway, we do that periodically throughout the year. Any other questions or discussion about this project? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
Okay, and that motion carries. Next on our agenda is the MOU between the Southern Fire Department and Mississippi Office of Homeland Security Task Force.
This MOU between the Fire Department and the Task Force was, is a renewal. The MOU has previously been in place. The Task Force was formed after September 11, 2001, and it just sets forth the obligations and responsibilities between Homeland Security, Mississippi Office of Homeland Security and the South Haven Fire Department in the event some, one of the emergencies occurs, that set forth the MOU. No obligations until that happens, but it's just a renewal of the previous MOU authorizing the participation for the Fire Department in this task force.
I'll make that motion. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second by Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion?
How long will this last, Nick?
This MOU is until it's canceled, so it's a perpetual MOU. We can get out of it with notice of 30 days, or maybe 60 days. We get out with notice of.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion?
Or funding to allocate for the project.
Okay, hearing no other discussion. Roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
And Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for the DeSoto Economic Council Salute to Industry.
This is just the resolution under 211944, authorizing the donation to the Economic Council for this salute industry event in May.
Some move? Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Flores, second by Alderman Gallagher. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a contract with Cummins Generator.
This contract with Cummins Generator is for, it's basically to help with all the routine, it might be scheduled maintenance for all the generators throughout the city. So it is exempt from the bid law since it's for normal maintenance. The contract has been reflected, reflecting Mississippi law in certain areas as it relates to governmental entities. So tonight, just need approval for the mayor or Dylan Brink to sign the contract in the amount of $39,353 per year for that maintenance service and the regular scheduled maintenance for all the generators throughout the city.
I'll make that motion. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is an amendment to our city employee handbook.
Yes, since the city is an MDOT sub-recipient, we, the city must comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, which we do comply with. This was just setting forth the actual policy, and that Title VI deals with public accommodation and agencies, or no discrimination in public accommodations and agencies of governments receiving the federal funding, which is MDOT is the conduit for that federal funding. But this policy will put us in compliance with those sub-grants and those grants that we receive from MDOT of having that on our handbook, and it's the, it's required as part of that recipient of the MDOT funds. It was drafted by Melanie, it's been reviewed, and so it's just like I said, a Title VI amendment to our handbook. So we're in compliance for the federal funds that are required under MDOT programs.
Some move? Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Flores, second by Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a bid award for our city neighborhood park improvements project.
Yeah, I think this award obviously went to bid under 31713. The neighborhood, the neighborhood upgrade of the neighborhood park projects, the low bidder was Merkin Sons in the amount of $2,834,213. It will include all the work, all the extras that were included as part of the bid, since it was below budget. I note there is a board right here with all the improvements. I don't know if anybody's looked at it or wants to expand on that. But tonight, for the purposes of approvals, it's authorizing the award to Merkin Sons, along with the mayor and/or his designated, you know, documents, documents to effectuate the attendant contract and the bid.
Some move? Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second by Alderman Jerome, and I'll start the discussion. As Nick stated, there is a board there that shows the details of all the improvements. I'll put out a statement as well after this meeting that goes in detail exactly what's going to be done in each park. But this is a great project. You know, we spent so much money over the years with our tourism revenue trying to do the improvements to the money-making things that brought in tourism, and that was smart. And we did, we did things that brought money in. Now we're able to, since we've had the tourism tax extended and had to fight hard for that, by the way, we now are able to get into some things that get into our neighborhoods, you know, to really, you know, to touch other people that may not use the other parks as much. So anyway, it's a good position for us to be in, to come as far as we have. Y'all may not know this or not, but since 2013, we've invested over $35 million in our parks. And if you look back to 2010, when the initial Penny for Your Parks campaign was promoted, we've knocked out, if not all, almost everything that was on that initial list from 2010. So we've come a long way, and like I said, y'all know the battles we've been through with the, you know, keeping the funding for this, but we've been able to do it. And so the city's in a good position right now. You know, we've got a lot of the big stuff knocked out, and now we're able, again, you know, to get into some of the neighborhood stuff. So it's really going to be special, you know, for a lot of people. But anyway, the details of that, that are on that board will be posted, you know, via social media, and the media will, you know, is watching this meeting, so they'll jump on this and help get the word out for that. Any other discussion about that? One thing I may add, and again, the good part, which we don't see a lot. When we initially went to put a price tag on this, we estimated it to be 3.2 million, so this bid is 2.8. So that's a good, that's also a really good thing. That we don't see much, right? It's usually the other one.
Not anymore, no.
Yeah. Any, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is a resolution for a change order for our Bank Plus Amphitheater.
This change order, which has been recommended and certified by Urban Org, is an amount of $58,416 for the project. It's the items that are required by the city building, city building and fire departments. It's for the stainless steel and the signal wayfinding signs, along with the electrical for the video boards and light poles required by the city buildings department. So tonight, need authorization for the mayor to sign the change order and approve it as required by the safety codes and directed by the city on this part of the original scope of the project.
Some move? Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Flores, second by Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for personal property tax exemption for Intuitive Surgical Incorporated.
This personal property tax exemption has been recommended by the Economic Council and was previously approved by the DeSoto County Board Supervisors for Intuitive Surgical, Inc., in the amount of $3,197,402 for a period of five years. So tonight, need authorization for the mayor to sign the resolution and provide the same to MDOTR for approval and for the tax incentive as presented.
I'll make that motion. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Flores, second by Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is ratification of emergency services by our Parks Department.
The Parks Department, after that last ice storm and the subsequent high winds, tornado warnings, had damaged trees that were over hanging the walking path. And so in order to prevent one of them from falling or destructing, causing destruction on city property, there was the Addison Tree Center, Addison Tree Care was contracted to remove and cut the dead branches and damaged trees that would fall on anyone on the path and/or fall on the city property. So tonight, just need authorization to ratify their services in the amount of $6,900 for the removal of those trees on an emergency basis.
Some move? Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second by Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes have it. That motion carries. Next on our agenda is approval to seek bids for our South Haven Police Department fencing project.
This is just authorization to seek the bids for the fencing project for the SPD. The specs have been completed, and once those bids are received, they'll be brought back to award for contract approval and lowest and best approval as well. So just need authorization for the approval to seek bids.
Some move? Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Gallagher, second by Alderman Jerome. Just a quick update for everyone. After the budget was set, we did separate the amount of money that the board allocated for facilities maintenance. We wanted to, you know, boil down exactly what's maintenance and what's renovations. So we've actually, Dylan Brink has done a great job with that. We now separate it. So some of that money has always been used for renovations, as we're always going to have, you know, a need to renovate some of our facilities. And so this is, when we took that amount of money for the renovations, Dylan has, we prioritized that list, and this project has, has moved to the top of that list. So that's where that's being funded in the budget that you set. And this will provide a good benefit for our police department and improve the facilities there.
Where will this fence go?
It's in the back to protect, you know, vandalism of vehicles. You know, it's crazy to think that people may vandalize a police car, but it does happen. And so the fence will mainly be, it will not be on the front lot, it'll be in the back lot.
So the front lot won't get any kind of pitch?
As of right now, the front lot will stay like it is. Chief Moore and I have discussed that, you know, if we need to come back and do some other things in the future, we will do that. But this is for the, you know, for the protection of, you know, personal vehicles and whatever that's in the back, that faces the library. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for unpaid sanitation fees.
This resolution, in accordance with Mississippi Code 21191 and 2, authorizes the seeking of the fees that are owed to the city to be placed on the car tag for the sanitation or as a lien on the home. So tonight, need authorization for this resolution for those sanitation fees that have not been paid.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Next on the agenda is a request for variance from our city facility use policy.
Yeah, this variance is for the South Haven Chamber of Commerce, the South Haven Young Professionals Group. Pursuant to your city facility use policy, anytime I call a store, it must get a variance from this board. So there is an event on May 12 from 5 to 9 where alcohol will be served, and so the board needs to approve the variance for the South Haven Young Professionals, South Haven Young Professionals in the Chamber to utilize it for alcohol, or serve alcohol that night at the Snow House.
Some move? Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Flores, second by Alderman Gallagher. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Next on our agenda is our planning agenda. Ms. Whitney Cook?
So we only have one item on the agenda tonight. It is for a conditional youth permit to be approved at 6890 Elmore Road. This is going to be across from the parking lot of Sam's. It's an existing office building. It's multi-tenant. But what they're wanting to do is combine all the tenant spaces and do the salon suites design, which we've seen with Gould and my salon suites at Malone and Goodman. We did have one concerned citizen in the office building next to them come and listen to the argument of the planning commission. Once his questions were answered, he was fine. It was mainly about parking. This is by appointment only, so parking would be sufficient with what was already there, and there would be no shared parking required. After that was discussed, the planning commission voted unanimously in favor of it, and it was voted for approval.
Mr. Mayor, I make your recommendation that we approve item number one on the planning agenda presented tonight.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Flores, second by Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is our mayor's report. Just a couple of things I want to update everyone about. First of all, we have a special day coming up in our city. North Point Christian School, which was formerly Southern Baptist Educational Center, is going to be celebrating their 50th anniversary this year. And that celebration is going to be on April 1, so SBC and North Point have been a special part of our city. I know it started in Memphis, but for most of the life, it's been in South Haven to provide a great, you know, educational system for our people. We have a lot of people that are lifetime North Point people, went to school there, then went back. Their children go to school there. Many of them have gone to work for the school. So it's just been a great organization for educating our youth and been a pillar for our community for many, many years. So, so we have issued proclamation for the celebration, which will be on April 1. So let me read this proclamation to everyone. Whereas 10 Southern Baptist churches had a vision in 1973 to establish a different kind of school where prayer was an essential component of school life and biblical principles were implemented as part of the curriculum. And whereas on April 1, 1973, that vision became a reality when the Southern Baptist Education Center, hereinafter known as SBC, was organized and dedicated to the glory of God. And whereas in 1974, SBC not only established its first campus on Tulane Road in Memphis, Shelby County, Tennessee, but also had 24 students in its first graduating class. And whereas in August 1988, SBC relocated to its current facility, which is situated on 61 acres in the heart of South Haven, DeSoto County, Mississippi. And whereas in August 2013, SBC changed its name to North Point Christian School to better reflect the school's mission and values so that they would be more deeply ingrained into the culture and language of the school to point children in the right direction to help them find their true north. The school hereinafter is known as North Point Christian School, or NCS. And whereas the number of students has consistently grown to where the total enrollment is 1,074 of the best students in the mid-south area. And whereas NCS offers an academic curriculum of the highest order through which students consistently score above the national average on all student achievement tests and the ACT. And whereas NCS provides a variety of co-curricular activities, including student government, drama and theater arts, chorus, band, honor clubs, and over 30 athletic teams for men and women in 13 interscholastic sports, and an extensive intermural program for lower school students. And whereas NCS is celebrating 50 years of fulfilling its mission of equipping the next generation by assisting the home and church in pursuit of a Christ-centered work and life view achieved through the highest quality biblically-based academic and co-academic instruction. Now therefore I, Darren Muswellite, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of South Haven, Mississippi, hereby proclaim April 1, 2023, as NCS Day in South Haven, and urge all citizens to join me in congratulating North Point Christian School and wishing them continued success in achieving their mission. And there'll be more discussion about that. We won't have another meeting before April 1. And there'll be more discussion about that. We won't have another meeting before April 1, obviously, but there'll be some other, you know, public activity that goes out to, you know, to really help promote this day and let NCS know that we're thankful for their presence in our city. The only other thing I wanted to update, we talked about the neighborhood parks tonight. That's one of the big things that we're doing today. Just want to give everybody a quick update on our sales tax situation. Our budget for this year for sales tax was 18 million. In 2022, we finished at about 18 and a half million, and then we're on pace right now already to be at 18.9. So we're ahead of budget, and that's without, you know, having our summer months, which typically are going to do better for us. Same thing on the tourism tax. That revenue finished at 2.9 million in 2022, and we're on pace this year already to be at 3,690,000. So numbers are looking good so far throughout the year. And that's all I have this evening. Are there any questions from the board to me, or anything else that we would like to discuss before we move on? Hearing none, let's move on. Let's go into our personnel docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the personnel docket as presented on this date. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our city attorney's legal update.
Yeah, two quick items. The first item that I got in this afternoon, it is authorization for the mayor to sign a sponsorship agreement with Gold Strike for the amphitheater. They'll be paying, or it's in sponsorship to the city for $27,200 in exchange for some advertising, plus they'll get use of box seats as well. So as part of the authorization, we have to look on private and the sponsorships. We need authorization from the mayor to sign this contract with Gold Strike.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Flores, second by Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion?
This doesn't affect any way our contract with Bike Plus.
No, they're not competing. We're cognizant of that on everything, yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries.
Now, the next thing I have is authorization for sole source purchase by the Parks Department for the Zoll defibrillators. They are going to be used at the amphitheater for any events that may be needed. Our fire personnel, that's the one we use throughout the city, so it's consistent with what we use and are trained on. Obviously, Zoll is the only one who can provide what we have. They have provided the sole source letter. So authorization for that purchase in an amount of $9,405 by the city Parks Department.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second by Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is our utilities billing leak adjustment docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the utility bill leak adjustment docket as presented on this date. A second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is one claims docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the claims docket in the amount of $3,854,337.50, including domain checks.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second by Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
And that motion carries. Next on our agenda is the purpose of determining the need for executive session.
Who makes that motion?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Gallagher, second by Alderman Hoots. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. The need this evening is economic development in our city, potential litigation, and interdepartmental personnel with no action. Is there a motion to declare executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hoots, second by Alderman Payne. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. The mayor and board will announce our executive session.